Reconvene back into the Finance meeting. We have completed our discussions in Executive Session. Is there a motion to adjourn Finance?
Move to adjourn Finance.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Finance is adjourned. Now, we're going to move on to the January tenth, 2022 Council Meeting. If you please rise for the presidential legends.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item we have is the Final Oath of Office for Reggie Hare, for the Ward Three Councilwoman. And I think Mayor Dennis Hanwell will be swearing in with Mr. Lamb, the other Council Representative, holding the Bible.
Please repeat after me.
I, Regina Hare.
I, Regina Hare.
Being duly sworn.
Being duly sworn.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Charter and ordinances of the City of Medina, Ohio.
The Charter and ordinances of the City of Medina, Ohio.
And will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
And will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Devolving upon me.
Devolving upon me.
As Ward Three Councilperson.
As Ward Three Councilperson.
For the City of Medina.
For the City of Medina.
Medina County, Ohio.
Medina County, Ohio.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
She's going to take a picture.
Stand in front of the mic, too.
Don't stand in front of the mic.
Don't stand behind her.
It's a good idea. Thank you, John.
All right. All right, welcome. Welcome back. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Hare.
Here.
Hazel Time.
Present.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
We have two minutes as prepared and submitted by the clerk. The first is the last meeting of 2021, December thirteenth, a regular meeting, and then also our organizational meeting on January fifth, 2022.
Second. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee prior to Finance this evening, and will meet again in two weeks. Health, Safety, and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meetings scheduled, nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Public Properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meetings scheduled, no report this evening.
Thank you. Special Legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no meetings scheduled, but the clerk and I are working on scheduling some of the issues that are in my committee so that we can get those on the books and get the meetings going. Thank you.
Thank you. Streets and sidewalks, Ms. Hare.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Again, welcome. I put you on the spot right away. Water and Utilities, Mrs. Hazel Time.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meetings scheduled at this time and nothing to report.
Thank you. And Emerging Technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meetings scheduled, but we do have one opening for the Advisory Committee. If anybody's interested, please send me an email, prose@medinah.org, or send it to the Mayor's Assistant, Sherry Crowe. Thank you.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for the Finance Committee. We have twenty-two-one, budget amendments; twenty-two-two, expenditure for software solutions annual support; twenty-two-three, twelve-hour shifts for patrol officers and sergeants for the Police Department; twenty-two-four, expenditure for Central Square Maintenance Agreement for the Police; twenty-two-five, expenditure over fifteen thousand for MNJ Technologies for the Police; twenty-two-six, expenditure of fifteen thousand for Vance's Law Enforcement for the Police; twenty-two-seven, authorization for land negotiation, two thousand Medina Road; and twenty-two-eight, cooperative purchase, ARPA funds, Musco Lighting, Reagan Park Field Number Four. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hanwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to wish Council and the public Happy New Year and welcome Councilwoman Reggie Hare, as well as re-elected Councilmembers-at-large Paul Rose and Councilwoman Jess Hazel Time back. I'd like to take a moment to thank all the staff at Medina City Hall for their patience and understanding during the City Hall renovation projects that have taken place over the last two years. Operations continued uninterrupted, and staff handled the noise, dust, and general disruption admirably, and it came out very nice. I'd also like to offer congratulations to Medina Police Department Special Officer Rick Rice. Rick is retiring after having served over fifty-two years, fifty-two years, as a special for the city. His father served in the specials unit, was one of the earliest members, and his two sons, Todd, who was a full-time officer with Medina Police Department, and his other son Terry served on the specials first, then went on to full-time employment at Montville, working his way up to Chief of Police, and Terry is now the Sheriff of Medina County. Rick's son-in-law also served on our specials and is currently a full-time officer for Wadsworth PD. So, the law enforcement and the specials unit runs in the family. Rick was asked if he would be willing or interested in coming to the council meeting for recognition, and he respectfully declined that he came in quietly and would like to leave quietly, but we thank him for his service. And last but not least, the Martin Luther King Service this year. I'm honored to be asked to be the featured speaker at the annual service. The service will be at First Baptist Church, which is three-six-four-six Medina Road, next to the Bueller's there on eighteen, on January seventeenth at seven PM. I hope to see you there, and there's also a link to watch remotely for those who are not comfortable coming to the church. I will tell you, it's a good-sized church, though, with plenty of seating and plenty of area to spatially distance, but for those that aren't comfortable, the link is HT, as in Tom, T as in Tom, P as in Paul, S as in Sam, colon, hashtag, hashtag, www dot firstmedina.org, I'm sorry, org slash MLKJ slash, and that way you can watch it remotely live. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy New Year, everyone. There are a couple items that originated with Finance that I'll address when we get there, and otherwise I have no report.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy New Year to all of you, and I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Chief Kinney, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Walters, Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also have no report this evening.
Thank you. Monsieur Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report. Spend a nice, quiet winter.
Thank you, Mr. Worley, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple things from the REC Center. Wanted to remind the public of the opportunities that we have at the REC that are increasing day, every day. This month, we have our Focus on Fitness January Special, where new or renewing members, memberships will get a five-visit class punch pass, good for land aerobics or our aquatics classes. We've expanded our offerings and have hired some new instructors, offering cycling, HIIT, women-on weights, yoga, Zumba, karate, total interval training, Tai Chi, cardio circuit, deep-water running, water exercise, and aquatics. That's a lot. So, you should come check them out. We also have some improvements underway. We're expecting our ten new treadmills in a couple weeks, as well as our new flooring and Community Room A, which is now a fitness studio. So, lots going on. Stop in and see us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Monsieur Dutton, Planning Committee Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just note, we have our next Cooperative Plans Steering Committee meeting Wednesday to nineteenth. We're moving from the input gathering portion to the draft chapters, so we'll have that to discuss. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Confirmation of Mayor's Appointment, we have one. Historic Preservation Board, Patty Stahl, the business owner, for a term expiring twelve-thirty-one-twenty-five.
Move to confirm the Mayor's Appointment.
Second. Any discussion on the Mayor's Appointment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the Mayor's Appointment?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next, we have a motion by Council to authorize a designee for the Public Records Training. This is a motion to designate Clerk of Council Kathy Patton to act as the Mayor and Council's Designee to attend the Public Records Training as required by Sections one forty-nine forty-three and one oh nine forty-three of the Ohio Vice Code.
I will make a motion to designate Clerk Kathy Patton as the Mayor and Council's Designee for Public Records Training.
Second. Discussion. For the clerk, please call the roll.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
And thank you for volunteering, Kathy. That was wonderful of you. Notice these communications and petitions. We have one liquor permit not to object to the issuance of a new D-one permit to Chantcoat, is that right? LLC eight seventy-one North Court Street, Medina.
Move not to object.
Second, not to object. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
On finished business, we have none introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the Chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the rear microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the Chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address Council at this time? I have nobody. Introduction and consideration of orders and resolutions. At this time, an entertaining motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Resolution one twenty-two, ordinance two twenty-two, resolution three twenty-two, ordinance four twenty-two, ordinance five twenty-two, ordinance six twenty-two, resolution seven twenty-two, ordinance eight twenty-two, and ordinance nine twenty-two.
I will make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings of tonight's ordinances and resolutions.
Second. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the motion?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, to start off the year, we have resolution one twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the application of grant assistance from the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, SFY, twenty-twenty-two specialized dockett subsidy project funding grant for the Medina Municipal Court.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. Who's going to hear this one? This is from the court? Me? I guess this is just an annual subsidy grant from the, for the Medina Municipal Court. I guess there's not much I can say about it. That's all we know about it. Any further discussion or comment on the resolution?
No.
All right.
Move to approve.
Second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Resolution one twenty-two passes seven zero.
Ordinance two twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of not to exceed sixty-five thousand, sixty-six thousand five hundred to Epic Aviation LLC for the purchase of Jet A Fuel at Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to cover aviation fuel, jet fuel for the year, we hope. Depending on fuel prices, we would have to come back, obviously, if prices go up significantly. We had originally requested the emergency clause because we didn't know when the final delivery in 2021 would be made, but we got a delivery late in December, so we do not need emergency clause because we won't be buying anymore until into February or beyond.
Great. Any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Ordinance two twenty-two passes seven zero.
Resolution three twenty-two, a resolution requesting the county audit to make tax advances during the year twenty-twenty-two pursuant to the Ohio Vice Code Section three twenty-one thirty-four.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause request that I moved added at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause? Discussion on the emergency clause and the resolution, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. The resolution is, as it states, to request advances on the property taxes. If we don't formally make this request, we don't get the money until they do the final settlements. The emergency clause is because the first, first one of these advances is within the time that it would not be effective.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on a resolution and/or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Resolution three twenty-two passes seven zero.
Ordinance four twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of twenty pieces of Matrix Ultra and Aura Selectorized Weight Equipment through Johnson Health Tech North America for the Recreation Center.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause been requested, I moved add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause? Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance, Mr. Worley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This request is to replace twenty pieces of selectorized equipment that have been with the facility since two thousand and two. They've served us well, but it's come time for us to upgrade the equipment. We're using carryforward funds for this purchase and utilizing Ohio DAS state term schedule. The price does include the trade-in of the equipment listed on the ordinance in the amount of seven thousand dollars. The emergency clause is requested because the quote is only good until January thirty-first.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on either the emergency clause or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance four twenty-two passes seven zero.
Ordinance five twenty-two, an ordinance amending Section thirty-one oh two E of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the salary schedule pertaining to lifeguards and water safety instructors at the Medina Community Recreation Center.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Worley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The REC Center is having difficulty recruiting new lifeguards and retaining those that we have due to the ongoing minimum wage increases. So, we're, we did a study with other facilities nearby and are requesting to make the pay comparable to those average lifeguard rates. The new pay rates would be effective immediately for all of our new hires, and then existing staff will be reevaluated and step recommendations made based on their level of experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance five twenty-two passes seven zero.
Ordinance six twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute consent legislation with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, to complete a sign replacement project at various locations in the city of Medina.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause been requested, I moved add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause? Any discussion on the emergency clause and ordinance, Mr. Patton?
Thank you. This is legislation requested by ODOT. They have a project for this summer to replace various signs along State Route Three throughout the city. Emergency clause request because ODOT forwarded this legislation to us in mid-December and asked that we return by the end of December. We did let them know that we wouldn't be able to pass it until the first meeting in January, but we would request the emergency clause.
That's very ambitious of them. Any further discussion of the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Hare.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Ordinance six twenty-two passes seven zero.
Resolution seven twenty-two, a resolution amending resolution number one fifty-three twenty-one passed September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, relative to Section One, allocation of funds for small cities fiscal year twenty-one community development black grant, CDBG program.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. It appears they just wanted to round off the numbers, so what was forty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five went to forty-nine four, seventy-three one twenty-five went to seventy-three one hundred, eighteen thousand for machinery for lawn mowing, stayed the same, and then they reversed the fair housing administrative contract from three thousand to sixty-five hundred, and the administration from sixty-five hundred to three thousand. So, the total grant is still a hundred and fifty thousand, just some rounding and corrections of some numbers that they preferred.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Resolution seven twenty-two passes seven zero.
Ordinance eight twenty-two, an ordinance amending ordinance number two oh one twenty-one passed December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, amendments to the twenty-twenty-two budget.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first line should be amended to account number one oh seven oh one oh seven instead of one oh six oh one oh one. That's a donation that the fire department received. The second one is the ARPA funds that were moving from one line to another, and the third one is this bicentennial sale.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazel Tyne?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 822 passes seven zero as amended.
And finally, Ordinance 922, an ordinance amending the rental fees for the Medina Community Recreation Center and repealing all previous ordinances pertaining to rental fees.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause. Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance, Mr. Worley.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are currently operating without a rental coordinator at the REC Center and have not done rental, official rentals since COVID had started. This request is to streamline our birthday parties and meeting room bookings and offer those online so we can reduce staff time and operate as lean as possible. The request also eliminated outdated party packages and services that we used to provide that we don't intend on providing in the future, as well as reduces the dedicated staff time to implement those rentals. The emergency clause is requested, as I mentioned previously, we do not have a rental coordinator. We're trying to operate as lean as possible and increase our revenues, and we're getting a number of rental requests. We've had 12 in the last week. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazel Tyne?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose? Motion passed at seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazel Tyne?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 922 passes seven zero.
Council comments? Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Reggie. It's going to be a pleasure having you sit next to me, and I'm sure it's like riding a bike. It comes back to you pretty quick.
I hope so.
She was here before. Yeah, now you're going to do great. Secondly, I'd like to just acknowledge Mr. Greis, Rick, for his half-century of service to the city of Medina. And the mayor was right in saying that his family has given back to this community and this county as much, if not more, than most families. But Rick was always such a pleasure to work with, and he's not going to be missed. My wife and I ran into him and his wife twice in the last week, so I don't miss him yet, but I'm sure the city and the police department is going to miss his presence. The only other thing is Happy New Year to everybody, and I'm going to start it out the same as I finished. With everything going on in our nation and around the world, just remember to be kind to one another. Try to put a smile on somebody's face. It can make such a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional council comments? Mr. Shields?
Danny said it well. I want to congratulate and thank Mr. Greis as well, just a wonderful community resident, and has done so much, and he and his family are all about community service and all about Medina, so thank you for that. And then Reggie, welcome. It's glad to work with you again. Look forward to having you on council.
You want me to go first?
Enjoyed the last time we worked together. I know it'll be great this time, too, so thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, my goodness.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you. Reggie, congratulations. Great to have you here. One, two, three, four, five men, two women. Right, that's good. Kind of helped to create an interesting new balance. I also want to thank Rick Greis for all his years on the special police contribution to the city, and also to mention that lots of things that we take for granted in the community, we never really know who made a lot of those things happen. And Rick Greis, beyond his work on continuing on the planning commission, his work with the special police, when you think about the things we really like here and take for granted, I mean, Rick Greis, Rick Greis played a key role in the city saving and purchasing the airport that became Medina Airport. Without Rick's work, that probably would never have been successful. Rick played a key role in drafting the legislation that created the Historic Preservation Board to protect the downtown. Without him, I'm not sure that that legislation ever would have gotten through council. Rick was a significant part of our ability to put Christmas lights up on the downtown and create the Community Christmas Program. Rick played a key role in the expansion of the firehouses. When the firehouse that's now a museum on the square was decommissioned, we had passed a levy, and Rick was very significant in finding where we would put the new firehouses and completing that construction. And he also was one of the most important people in saving the historic Munson House that was located on East Washington Street and moving it to Prospect Street because that is one of the most historic homes in the city. So it's always important to remember that there are many people that contributed who never really have been recognized, and Rick probably never was keen to be recognized for the role that he played. And on top of all that, Rick was the first planning director that the city had. Prior to Rick, there was no planning department in the city. Thank you.
Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy New Year to everybody. Looking forward to, hopefully, 2022 is our best year ever, better than 2021. Reggie, welcome. New face. It's going to be fun. And then to Rick, congratulations. I know you've done a lot of good for the city. Bill enlightened me a little bit more, but I'll see you Thursday night at the planning meeting. You're never going away. You're going to be here forever. Okay. And just to bring everybody, the residents, up to date on the costs that the Stop Government Waste Committee has given the city an extra. In 2021, they added $85,000 to our costs, taken out of the taxpayers' general fund to pay for extra legal fees for their lawsuits, which, by the way, they've lost three. I forget how many they've submitted, but every one that's been adjudicated has been adjudicated in the city's favor. So maybe they ought to learn a lesson, quit wasting the city's money, and stop these stupid lawsuits. Let the taxpayers have their money's back for the money that they want, city services, police, fire, et cetera. Okay? And then the opportunity cost that we lost was $200,000 by not being able to participate in the new courthouse. So $285,000 because somebody didn't like somebody else. That's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Mrs. Hazel Tyne?
I just want to say, I really wish that Councilman Rose would share how he feels more often.
I'm working on that.
He's making great progress in that. That's his New Year's resolution. First of all, I want to recognize my new seatmate and female power here up on the council. Reggie, welcome. I'll try not to be too annoying sitting next to you. Eric will tell you any tips if you need them. Obviously, we owe a great debt of gratitude to Rick Greis. I was unaware until Mr. Lamb shared all of the wonderful things, and he said, "You're responsible for my next-door neighbors," so thank you. And then I also want to take a moment to congratulate my dear friend Nick Hannick, who has just been voted in as the vice mayor of Brunswick. So congratulations, Nick. It is well deserved.
Thank you. Reggie, you're the last one. Any observations or comments?
I just want to thank everybody for welcoming me back to city council. Sorry I missed last week. Thanks to all the sickness that's going on out there. I certainly didn't want to pass it on to anybody, but I'm really looking forward to working with the city, working with the administration, and my fellow council members, and representing the residents of the city of Medina and Ward 3. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any, I guess that's it. There's nothing else, unless the department has wanted to give us a pizza party, but maybe that's later on. We'll think about that.
Mr. President, when's the first budget meeting?
The first budget meeting is coming up soon. Everybody prepare. It's in a few months, so don't lose it. Don't lose sight of it. We love those meetings. Meeting is adjourned.